Carrie's here first. She's awesome. Hi Carrie.
Hello.
Hey Carrie, how are you tonight?
For some reason I can't hear you. I don't know why.
You're not muted. Muted. No?
Oh, there it goes. I accidentally had the computer muted.
Okay, I'm gonna make you the host, okay?
Okay.
Alright, cool. And then I'm going to make my exit. Have a good meeting tonight. It sounds like it could be a lot of people.
There's gonna be a lot of people, boy.
Well, not too many, but... Oh, where'd they go? Oh, you have to, there you go. Awesome. Great, well have a good meeting. Hi Charlene. And I will, um... Head out. Bye.
Bye.
Well, that must have been another meeting. Well, she's the one that had the eating disorder. They did a special on her the other night.
Hey Deacon. How are ya?
I'm good, I'm good.
Good.
Burned a lot of wood lately. Watched the pile go down.
Yep, I know that feeling. Yeah. Yeah. I'm starting to think, wow, it's almost March. So... I don't have to restack too much.
Yeah, well it'll get, it'll get, it'll get, the really bad cold's gotta be over soon.
Yeah, I would think so. Yeah, this week is mild, next week is cold, but...
Yeah, but... I don't know, I'm hoping minus 10 is just a memory.
Yeah. That gets into your bones.
Yeah.
You have more public than members.
I know. Oh, we're really... Oh, we're getting there.
Hey, everybody.
Hey Jeff, how are ya?
I'm alright.
Did you get that bylaw document finally?
And I just started looking at it.
Okay, sorry, I forgot. I didn't know I didn't attach it.
Alright, so...
Well, don't worry about it. There was enough other stuff to look at.
That's true.
So... Let's see, so... I had, um... Oh, look, I had asked Nathan to host, so Carrie could focus on the minutes. And there he is.
I think Becky was... I think Becky was gonna host and then hand it over to someone.
Well, to Nathan.
She had opened, she had opened up the meeting earlier and I was there and she had made me host and then left. I can hand it off. No problem.
Oh, well, this is good. This is good.
You said, uh, Nathan was doing it?
Yes, yes. Minutes are plenty.
Okay. So I was looking for Nathan, then I realized that it says meeting out there ago, okay. Here you go.
So... So, are you there Nathan?
You're muted.
I am here, yes.
Okay, okay. Let's see.
I went to, uh... Open up the meeting and I saw I wasn't there and I was like, oh, so I'm glad it's going here.
Things are, it's all working out, so, um, I'll, um... I'll open the meeting. We have a quorum. I should note to everyone that it is being recorded. And... I should, I should let everyone know that the, uh, the ZBA ran into a posting difficulty and will not be here tonight, so I, and they have asked that we, um... Schedule another meeting where, when they can be, when they can be with us, so I, my sense is, we should probably wait till... We should probably not talk about the ZBA stuff tonight, but, but put it off a little, but rather, see if we can set on a, on a time when we do get together with them.
I think, Deacon?
Yes.
I would agree about the non-conforming structures, but I think with the composition of the ZBA, we can probably proceed if we want. Seems like that's not controversial.
Right. One thing I would say about that is, um...
But you should read the governor's thing and then we'll, you can talk again.
No, no need to anymore.
Oh, really? Oh, okay, great.
All we have to say is that it's being recorded.
Cool.
Yeah, so, um... Uh, one thing I would say about that is, the town clerk is in receipt of a petition to, to change the composition of the ZBA. And... There's, there's been an issue with her forwarding it to me, so...
She sent it today, or the cover sheet. A couple hours ago.
Okay, I didn't see that, okay.
Yeah, it didn't look like much of a petition, it just looked like from one person. I didn't see any signatures.
I believe she noted in the email that a piece of the, uh, the petition itself along with the petition matter was missing. And I believe she reached out to the individual who sent it in to, um... Email her that piece.
Yeah, so, so I was thinking that, since that, since whatever we, since whatever happens there with, with the composition of the ZBA, it's going to be a really simple fix. So, I was just gonna pass it over for now until, until we have that petition in full, you know? Chuck talked to me about possibly having a meeting this, with them, the 16th or the 23rd. Is, is that some, are those dates good with people? I mean, do, are you willing to do it?
Those dates look okay. Is that solely about... Which is that about? Is that about both?
Well, that's about meeting with the ZBA on, I mean, I assume that, that primarily we, we'd be talking about the zoning and alter, the, um, extension and alteration stuff, but that we might as well do the, the, um, the ZBA composition at the same time.
Okay, yeah. Both of those dates are open right now for me.
Other people wanna speak to that?
I have a question for that. This is Mr. Salvador. I, uh, filled out that petition originally. Do you need me to go and grab another one, because they haven't notified me that they lost it?
Um, my sense, my sense of this issue is that nobody... I'm sorry? My sense of this is that nobody disagrees.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. In case you need me to stop by the town hall and grab another form, if that was easier. I got plenty of people that would sign it, it's just, uh, to get it in the mix.
Yeah, I think, is it Joe or Joseph?
Joseph.
Okay, so Joseph, I think it's your call. Um, I mean, we wouldn't wanna not have a citizen petition filed and say, "Don't do it." But I think Deacon's correct that, um, both the ZBA and the planning board are leaning towards, as we already discussed, that we support going to five peo, five people as opposed to three, so it's sort of in your court. It'll, it'll end up in the same place, the same discussion.
Hopefully it doesn't end up in the same place.
Well, no, going to five, I mean.
I'll, I'll ask in case they need me just to do it anyways, but I'll find out.
Yeah, it's, well, I mean...
And I got one other question, so, anything with the heights and all of that, the questions of changing zones is not gonna be addressed today, is that what you're saying?
I, I think we should address it when the ZBA can be here. Um, I mean, I, my sense is that we should, we should try to reschedule the meeting, you know, to make up for, for being unable to do it tonight.
Well, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, and, and Chuck, Chuck has suggested the dates of the 16th and the 23rd. Those dates are good with me, they're good with Jeff. I'm trying to find out if they're good with other people.
I'm, I'm good with either one.
Let's see. I thought I saw Linda, Steve and, and Robert.
You didn't see me.
Okay, but I mean, you're...
I'm here. I don't know if I disappeared from your screen, but I'm here.
You did, you did. So are those dates good with you, Linda, Steve?
Yeah, they're fine.
Can we actually do the 23rd, is that all right? Oh, actually, it doesn't matter.
Well, if, yeah, my sense is that it is, that if, um, we're, if it's an extra meeting, um... I don't think it matters if it's...
I don't want them, okay? At least, no one, thank you.
I mean, if the 23rd is more convenient for you, Michael, I would tend to lean toward that as long as, I mean, if, if that was good with other people.
Well, I can... I, I think if the, if the 23rd is more convenient for Michael, I definitely think we should have it on the 16th.
I'm, I'm actually looking at, I've got... I just have a CPC on the 17th and another meeting on the 24th, so I was trying to avoid two meetings in two days, but it's gonna happen either way, so it doesn't really matter. Nathan, do you have?
I'm good, either way.
I'm good either way. Um, it sounds like, well, well, why don't, why don't I shoot for the 16th then if it, and if something comes up, we'll still have the 23rd to fall back on.
We're talking about potential, potential, um, amendments to the zoning bylaw, the earlier we talk about it, the better.
Yeah, that, yeah, there we go, so, um, so, I'll get back to Chuck and, um, and look to schedule for the 16th. Um, is everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Yeah, I think Steve should take minutes and just do what he did today, for...
Well, no, no, no.
No, just for that discussion. The Jeff and Chuck dynamic.
Oh. You be, yes, the Jeff and Chuck show, yes.
Yeah.
We, we all look forward to it.
It, it will be a repeat though of what we heard already.
Maybe, maybe we'll have some new costumes and some new lines ready for the next go around.
Okay, so, I'll, um... I'm, I'm assuming there's a consensus here among the planning board and that I'll, and that I'll schedule for the 16th and talk to Chuck.
Yes.
Can I ask one quick question?
Please.
So, I think what might be helpful is sending something out about, um, because when we left off, we agreed that, well, some people were into the idea of having just a reorganization and no substantive changes. So, I could send out two copies of what we discussed, one that just reorganized it with no changes. And at least have that as a starting, would that be helpful for people?
I think that's great, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's unfortunate this has happened, but, there, maybe we can go home early tonight.
Don't bank on it.
I'm not.
Move us along, Deacon. If no one's talking, move us along.
Okay, good. Um, I got a couple more things.
Okay.
This year, the terms of Linda, Robert and Jeff are, are expiring, so... Papers should be sought if, if you wanna re-up. One thing I've noticed is that, is that for... We don't, um, we're not on the right schedule for, for terms ending. There's only one, I mean... There's a year coming up where only one planning board member will be, will have a term ending, and that's just not right. I don't know how we fix this. Um, I think that at some point, we should get back on the regular, on the regular re-up schedule, because this is wrong, and something, something happened in the past where the schedule got, the schedule of two or three seats expiring each year got forgotten. And, so, sometime we should probably talk to Donna about how we get, how we get back on on not having a year when only one seat is up. This is... Something is gonna arrive.
Okay, that's a good question for the council.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Dog agrees.
Okay. And then, um, since, uh, since I did the agenda, the Wheelock Report has arrived from Tim Garcia. It's not on the agenda. I don't know that we need to talk about it much. Anybody wanna talk about that report tonight?
No, if we put it on the agenda for next time, that'd be just be helpful.
I, I, I looked it over and, uh, thing I was, I guess most interested in was seeing some evidence of work on the road. And that they do, I didn't read the, the pros, but they do have some pictures of, of them resurfacing the road before the snow. So, it's somewhat reassuring that they, that they actually did something, so that's good.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I had to deal with my barking dog. Well, let's, uh... Let's go to the associate member thing, which I incorrectly characterized as an amendment, and it's, and it's not. So, uh... Do we want, let's talk about the possible legislative fix for the associate member duties.
Okay, um, hey Jeff, could I just, before you go into the content? So, Jeff and I went to the select board meeting some weeks ago, like we were supposed to, and basically told the select board that we were interested in looking for a legislative fix, because, you know, the, the two attorneys agreed with us that we thought the AG made a wrong decision in terms of this. And recommended that the select board would be the body that would ask the legislators to do it. It seemed like they were fine with it, and it was back at our court to sort of deliver some language, which is where we got to, so I'll hand it over to Jeff.
Sure. So, Michael and I went, went around back and forth and discussed different approaches to it. Fixing it, um, in situ. You know, within section nine, the special permit section. Or, as I was recently advised by a couple of, of lawyers that I asked, getting it out of section nine entirely and putting it where it belongs, which is over in chapter 4181A, I think. The part of the zoning, or the part of the statute that organizes the planning board, so that's really where this belongs. It's where the ZBA associate, um, language is, and it's where the planning board associate language is. So... That's, that's the way I, I drafted it up and I sent it over to Michael and he liked it. So, I, I, I can share it very quickly. It, it's really pretty simple what's been done, if I'm allowed to share a screen.
That's you, Nathan?
Yeah, I'm working on that.
Sorry, if I just make one comment for a minute, um, for minute, minute purposes, I was hoping that everyone attending could, um, change their names to full names for docu, uh, documentation purposes, that'd be really grateful or helpful, thank you. Sorry, I should also clarify, like, full name, like, full last, uh, first and last name.
In case you just wanna remind people how to change their name in case they don't know how to do that?
Yeah, um, if you click on your little icon in the top right corner, there's three little dots. And, uh, once you click on that, a little drop bar pops down and at the bottom they'll say rename, where you can type in your name. Thank you.
Nice.
Michael, you sure you got your name spelled correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, Jeff.
I'm, I'm practicing.
Okay, good.
I changed my last name from Fungus to Bonner. That's funny, I thought your na, last name was Fungus, I, that's... So... So... Okay, well, let's get back to the, let's get back to the associate member stuff.
So, Jeff, are you, can you share still yet?
Uh, let me try, yeah, it looks like I can, um... Show all windows. I've got a lot of stuff up here, I'm confused, okay, here we go.
Yeah, just don't make, make sure you share the right window, Jeff.
Alright. Okay, so, so here it is. This is actually written in bill form, the way, the way you would write a bill for the legislature, it's, um, based on the senate drafting manual. So, anyway, there's two sections. One, um, is basically taking this language about associate members out of section nine of the zoning act, because that's the special permit section. And that's part of the confusion, is where it appears. It appears in the special permit section. So if you don't want it to be just indexed to special permits, it's smart to get it out of there, because it doesn't need to be there. And, you know, the, the problem is, the way it reads, zoning ordinance by law may provide for associate members of a planning board when a planning board has been designated as special permit granting authority, that's problematic language. And then, again, as, further down, acting on a special permit application. That's what the AG was going on when they made the, um, made, uh, the, um, the determination that really we can only have associates for special permits. It's in that section and it kinda says, that's all they can do. So... What, what the bill does, section one strikes this out of the, the special permit section, so you take that whole paragraph out. Then, you, you insert a, a paragraph that's similar into, um, chapter 41, section 81A, which is where the planning board is actually, um, created. And that sets out the basic parameters for a planning board. And in between paragraph one and paragraph two, there's a nice place for this paragraph. And it simply says, let me get, let me get rid of this here. It simply says, zoning ordinance or bylaws may provide for associate members of a planning board. Doesn't go on to say anything about when they're acting on special permits, just associate members. And then, the other part is, um... The chairman of the planning board may designate an associate member to sit on the board for the purposes of acting on any matter under the jurisdiction, under its jurisdiction, including but not limited to this chapter 41, chapter 40A, or under its home rule powers. And let me take a second to explain what these are. Chapter 41 is a chapter that, that contains master planning and some other functions of the planning board. It also contains a subdivision control law, which is another big thing that we do, under chapter 41. Chapter 40A is the zoning act. And most prominently in the zoning act, we do special permits, which are in the zoning act. And then, under home rule powers, that covers site plan review, which we do under our home rule powers. There's no, there's no section on it in the, uh, in, in the statute. So, it, it... This is sort of the breadth of what we do, but, but again, it says, but not limited to. Anyway, we stick this section where it belongs and get it out of special permits. And I think we've accomplished what we, what we set out to accomplish.
And the one thing I would just add is, what's, it's very, it's a simple fix in terms of the language, because we're, and the first part of it, we're striking language. You know, that when acting is the special permit granting authority, and then Jeff just rephrased that second part that he just went over, so it's not like it's a whole rewrite, it's just two fixes and then lifting it and sticking it somewhere more appropriate.
So this'll be cool, and, um, probably, um, let's see, Bob Ritchie has, I've already talked to him about it, he thinks MMLA will, will get behind it and endorse it. Probably the Mass Municipal Association will. Mass chapter of the American Planning Association, Mass Association Planning Directors, Mass Association Consulting Planners, will, will also, I, I believe, come in behind it. So it'll be easy to round up cosponsors. And, uh, and it, it'll be a fun day on Beacon Hill, hopefully we can go in and testify live.
What's that, live? And, uh, so in terms of, I think for process, it would make sense for us to vote if we, on this. And then, if we vote in the affirmative, we can send to the select board and ask them to send you to the legislators. How's that sound, Deacon?
I think that's good. Do, do you wanna phrase that as a motion?
Sure. I will move to, let me just get it in front of me, I'll be more articulate if I can look at it. I'll move to approve, um, suggested changes to the associate, no. I will move to approve changes to, yeah, associate member language in Mass General laws, for submission to the select board via, uh, to submission to the legislature via the select board.
Okay, Jeff has seconded.
Sorry about that, Carrie.
Are you good? Are you good? How are you, are you good Carrie?
Yeah, it's good. Um, I actually just have my phone set up recording so that way I can just shoot back to it later.
Cool. Good, because whenever you, whenever you need to ask us to stop and make sure you're with us.
Alright.
Good, okay. Okay, so discussion on this. Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Uh, Steve?
Hi.
Okay, uh, Michael?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Nathan?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
And I'm an I. I don't, I don't see Robert. Okay, so. It's, it's unanimous of those who voted. Good. Let's go to, uh, energy storage.
Okay, um, has everyone gotten a copy of it at least? And so we discussed this briefly last time, but, um, we weren't all. On, um, but I'll, I'll give the, the background and then we can either walk through it or not.
Where you get started, Michael?
Say again?
Before you get started, I am, uh, not going to participate in, uh, this discussion.
You got word from on high?
Yeah, I, I did. I did ask the clarifying question and as suspected, it's, uh. Yeah, no go.
Okay, understood. So the, the rationale for, for doing this is twofold. One is, um. Any. Large scale solar project that gets marked subsidies as of last year has to include. Battery storage. Um, so if we're going to consider anything going forward, it will be batteries included. And so was, that was one data point. The other one was that the PVPC. Um, best practices guide for solar installations that came out last year. Talked a lot about battery storage. Um, the issues in, some of them came up when. The Wheelock folks came before the planning board to talk about adding a battery since it's a battery on site there, but, um, you know, there. Uh, I guess the third data point before I go to that is just that the state is got a whole initiative to roll out. Energy storage across the state and it can be either. Connected to energy generation like, like, you know, solar or wind, or it can be independent. So I think I mentioned last month that there's a large. I forget what the sizes, but I think it was a five acre. Battery assemblage in, in Plymouth, I believe it is Plymouth or Carver, but somewhere in the southeast that's already there. That's standalone. So not connected to energy generation and then. From what I was told, I think Ashfield has been approached, Wendell's been approached. Um, another town out here has been approached. So it's, it's starting to build steam. Um, and. The, if we think about just batteries, um. Those are complicated. There are, you know, lots of lithium batteries together, which, um, can create a, a fire hazard. But in doing the research, I expanded from batteries just to energy storage. Um, because there's different ways of storing the energy. As you can see in the definitions, it's mechanical, thermal, electrical, chemical, electro, electrochemical. So. Who knows how this is all going to happen, but however one is storing energy. Um, the idea is to address that either as a standalone or in connected to gen, generation. Probably two months ago, three months ago, when I first, the first iteration of this I did, it was really simple. I basically. Looked at the PVPC best practices guide and then built off of that. And then prior to last month's meeting, I looked at it and realized that there was a lot of things from the. Solar bylaw that might want to be included, which is why it got longer and, and more. More of a substantial document. Right, maybe I'll share my, I'll share my screen if I can. Um, is that helpful? Oh, hold on. I don't think you can see that yet. Report over. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, how?
These things can be proposed as standalone.
Yeah.
And I, I, I believe I've, I've heard of that, just without a, without a solar farm associated with them.
Yeah, without any kind of energy generation. Because they, you can attach them to wind or whatever, but they're. So the ones that got proposed or not proposed, but like in Ashfield, two companies called. The planning board, I believe, and they were just for standalones. And then the Wendell one was also for standalone. So it's.
Mi, Michael, could you just define standalone meaning independent of any, of any, um, solar or wind generation?
Yeah.
I don't understand.
Were they going to be along a power line?
I think that's what they do. I think the idea is that the, the energy is coming somewhere and it probably just gets. An, an offshoot into the batteries for use later. That would, that's my hunch. Um. So.
It, it can be completely dissociated, just so I understand, from any, any kind of energy installation.
Correct. Energy, energy generation. Yeah.
And, and that's what they mean by primary use later on in the.
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, it was, it was news to me. A couple of months ago, I didn't know that you could do that. So the purpose was really to, you know. Provide standards for, you know, approval placement, design, construction. This is similar to the kind of stuff that we, uh, had in solar bylaw. And then. The applicability. This is, I think, the part that Steve just mentioning. So it can be an accessory use. So if there's solar generation or, you know, if we had wind or, you know. Thermal, whatever it might be, something else generating electricity, the batteries would be accessory use. Um, or it would be a primary use where it was just energy storage. So this, this bylaw would be for both of those.
Michael, can I ask you one more question?
Yeah, keep going. Yeah.
Is it state statute? That if a energy storage facility is not associated with a solar or wind project. That we still have to accommodate that use? A town still has to accommodate that use?
Yeah, the state's pushing it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a thing. There's a whole, I think in the original email, I can send it to you after the meeting, but. Um, there's a state initiative. I, I don't think it's gotten much traction yet, but it's definitely. You know, it's on the, the state website under D, I think it's D O E R. But yes.
Okay.
The, uh, the, the, the Amicus brief talks about that kind of stuff. The Amicus brief we'll discuss in a little while talks about that. And it's, it's arguable as whether batteries would be covered under the solar exemption. But just batteries out there by themselves, connected to some transmission line. Probably would not be, not be under that exemption right now. So what, Michael, are, are you saying that there's, uh, there's a move on to, to expand the solar exam exemption to include the batteries?
Um, no, I, I'm gonna see if I can find it quickly.
Because, but while you're looking for that, Michael, what's puzzling me is I certainly understand battery storage associated with wind or solar. That makes sense. But to be just an isolated block of stor, storage batteries. Along a transmission line, I don't. It, it just doesn't figure into, into at least my thinking, but you know, that's why I'm asking.
Well, the, the logic is that, is that during, during daytime, you can, you can produce energy cheaper than you can at night.
No, no, I understand. I understand that part, Deacon. It's, it's the part that I, I don't quite understand is when it's. It's completely disassociated with any specific solar or wind in, you know, project.
No, I was just saying that, I mean, you know, the, um. The storage facility can take, can take, um, electricity from the grid, from whatever source it originated. And then, and then return it at, at a, at a more useful time.
It's like, it's like Northfield Mountain, except not with pump storage, but with batteries.
Yeah, exactly.
Can you guys see this?
Yeah.
So I think there, it's this, this little brown thing on the far right. I think it's looking at a mix of different kinds of energy. That has, you know, either storage capacity or generation, but I mean, they're, they're trying to roll it out. And I think to Deacon's point, it's, it's, this is, if you can see this little graph. I think the whole idea is if you store it, then you're sort of, you're, you're flattening out the curve of. You know, it's too bad Nathan can't talk because he's probably the most articulate about this.
But what, why store, why store it so far away from any? Any actual installation, solar or wind installation?
I don't know, but I mean, my, the thing that sort of caught my. My eye, I guess, or ears was, you know. That Wendell and Ashfield got asked about it, you know, because they're clearly just as off the beaten path as we are. And the fact that there's an energy storage initiative at the state where they're putting in money. It seems like it's just increasingly going to happen. So I don't have all the answers to it. It seemed. But it seemed like getting ahead of this since. At a minimum with the accessory use, that if any of this. The solar projects that are, you know, out there, if they become a special permits, they're going to have batteries attached to them.
By that, that I understand and for me that makes sense.
Yeah. So, and it.
But, but, but if, if you have a lot of energy flowing into the system from renewable sources. So during the day, you've got a lot of energy going in from the sun and then during windy times, you have a lot of energy going in from, from the wind. The, the, when the energy is being produced and not necessarily when there's a demand for it. So. The, what, the, the batteries just exist to pick up all the excess and not waste it. Uh, so that it can be kicked back into the grid when it's. You know, when, when there's demand, when the wind kicks down and when it's in the evening, I mean, my, my house is wired that way. I have batteries here.
That all makes sense, but energy, energy stored is lost in, across long distances, if I'm not mistaken. So I understand the accessory use is, feels like, okay, I get that. But ten miles away from the facility to put a storage only, a, a store, battery storage. Like so many miles away and that's hypothetical, just doesn't, again, in my mind, makes sense and I need help understanding that.
I think, you know, part of what I'm thinking Steve is that it's, you know, like a lot of these things, it's where's there space and where is it away from more people? Which is why they're sort of shopping around at the Ashfields and Wendles and, you know. In the southeast, um, you know, they wouldn't put a battery storage facility necessarily in Boston. It's just my guess. Um, you know, they'd want to have it somewhere, a little bit farther out, but.
One thing seems to me is that this, this proposal is designed to encourage competition. For who can, for who can, um, return the greatest percentage of, of power that has been stored, you know, because. I mean, these places are going to, are going to compete about how cheap they can do it. I mean, if, I mean, I would think that would be the theory. I mean, and maybe it, it probably doesn't, I'm sure it does, it is the case that the greater the distance, the, the less efficiently you can do it, but. It seems to me they're talking about how you can promote efficiency in storage.
Through competition. So Mr. Chairman, might I propose, since, I don't know, I, I, I need to go through this line by line. That if we're having a meeting on the sixteenth and we all have to get together anyway, we, we add this to the agenda. So. We make best use of our time and, uh. To do this as a second item on the sixteenth.
I'm good with that. I, Jeff, do you mind if I just sort of walk us through a little bit and then we, but we don't dig deep? Just to go over the parts. So I, because I think I just want to raise a couple of things for us to think about. So. These are, you know, this is a draft. It was just sort of my, my thinking about it, but. In the situation where the storage is an accessory use, so there's another generation source. The two things that I thought made sense was. The battery should be sized to accommodate only the energy generated on site. So, you know. If you wanted a primary source and it was just a primary use of batteries, you could have that, but if it's secondary, it shouldn't be any bigger than you need. Um, so that's a question we can discuss. Um, and then the second part of that was. It should be adjacent to the energy generation installation. So if you have a solar. You know, panels, for example, the battery should be somewhat adjacent to that. So wouldn't it, you know, it shouldn't be a mile away or five. You know, whatever it, they need to sort of be grouped. Um, so those are two assumptions we can discuss. Um, and then if it's a primary use, um, I think the one in Plymouth is like five or six acres. I started it with three acres, just trying to think of like, you know, the, the one at Wheelock, they described as sort of trailers. So my thought is, you know. I just, just trying to figure out, well, what's too big, what's too small? This is a place where we should discuss, like, if you have just a lot of. In this case, say batteries all bumped together and there is a fire potential. How many acres do you want of this stuff? You know, and if that got me to the whole. Buffer thing, which is this third point, you know, so with the solar, we have a four time buffer. Uh, my thought was, well, maybe we want to have a, a two times buffer for batteries. Um, and again, it's, you know, it's a total open question, but if we had three acres of. Energy storage or batteries, for example, um, would we want to then require that there was additional six around it? Um, so that's, those are points for us to discuss. These are all just starting points. The general requirements are pretty straightforward. I took for the required documents, um, some of the stuff from the solar bylaw in terms of. The wetlands and prior habit, priority habitat and the locations of local and national historic districts. The materials in terms of, you know, we had required fertilizers and additives, et cetera. Um. PVPC made, we had this already, but in terms of making sure that we know what the material data sheets are and all that kind of stuff. Um, there's an abbreviated version of the historical Native American stuff and then. The financial shared utility. The thing I just want to down here is the safety and environmental standards. Because that, I think one of the things that PVPC really stressed was sort of the, the fire hazard potential of it. So making sure that it was explicit that, um. There was a written emergency plan. That the developer would pay for annual training so that, uh, you know, the town wasn't picking up the cost of the training. Um, for fire, police and emergency management. There was clear w, ways of shutting it down if need be. Um, and then. I think that's all. And then finally down here, the last part, the chemical use. Apparently PFAS is, you know, as I think it's been in the news, but it's used primarily for fire suppression. So that's a question. Would we want to not have PFAS, um, used for any fire suppression? That's something we need to think about. And then the land clearing. Uh, is similar and the wetlands is all similar to the solar bylaw. And I sort of pulled out some of the stuff from solar bylaw in terms of citing and dimensions. We can look at the dimensions. I, there's nothing hard and fast about that at all. Um, and I think that's pretty much it. So it's, there's some new concepts. That are just pertinent only to energy storage. Um, and then there's stuff that it seemed like. Their thinking was sound behind solar, um, and there might be some. their thinking was sound behind solar, um, and there might be some applicability to energy storage. So that's, that's the, the summary.
Just, just one comment, um, broadly. I think as it, as it exists, the battery storage, um, as a primary use is not protected by anything in the zoning act. I, I would not think. So, we don't have to allow it unless we want to. We could prohibit it instead of, instead of writing up a bunch of language for a special permit, we could prohibit it. I'm not saying I favor that. I'm just saying everyone should be aware that, that writing this is going to be a little different than writing the solar where we had that exemption bearing down on. Whether, now if it's an accessory use to solar, it's arguable as to whether it would be, be included. Um, you know, I was just reading the, the Amicus brief today where she asserted it wasn't a part of the solar exemption. I would tend, I don't know, I, I, I would tend to think it probably is. You know, if, if the solar exemption really does cover large-scale ground mounted, and that's the way the court goes, it's probably going to go with the accessory things that, that, that attach to that. So, but anyway, I, I think we just should be aware that the freestanding independent ones of these, we have a choice, I believe, whether we, you know, how, how we regulate them.
Jeff, I appreciate that clarification. Is there a way to just confer, double check that maybe with Donna? Because that was, you answered one of my questions, which would have been, does that fall in the stat, under, under the state statute of unreasonably regulating solar installations? So I guess, go ahead, Michael.
I, I would imagine it's a huge gray area. I don't, I don't, I don't think any lawyer is going to answer it until the SJC decides. And, uh, you know, the, the reason I was partly thinking about it and it was when you think back to when you all did Wheelock, that, you know, you're doing a special permit without the bylaw and, you know, and how hard that was. And so my sense was, we probably wanted to avoid having to do that if and when a battery proposal came our way. So that was sort of the impetus behind this.
But what I'm saying is, we could decide policy-wise, that in Chutesberry, we're going to write something in attaching to, um, to solar for batteries.
Yeah.
How are we going to regulate the batteries? And we're not going to allow them otherwise. I think we can do that if we wish.
And, and I'll repeat, my question is, could, is that something that is worth checking to see how Donna McNichols would weigh in on that?
Do you want to do that, Jeff?
Did we have another thing for Donna that was mentioned earlier?
About the, about the, the, the staggering of terms for, uh, planning board members. I mean, we're, we're in a situation now where it's not being done properly and how we get back on track, I, I think we need to find out.
Okay.
Get off track.
I don't know if it's not proper. It just is, doesn't make sense.
No, but no, it's not proper because, you know, we have seven members for three-year terms. So what that's, what it's, seems pretty clear to me that within those, within that three, any three-year period, you have one election for three members and two elections for two members. You don't have any elections where there's only one.
Yeah, I'm only reacting to the fact that it's, it's not illegal. It just doesn't make much sense. Like we're doing it properly by the books. It just.
Legally, I don't know, but I mean, how, I mean, what we do now, I'm not, I mean, I think we should, it's a good question for Donna.
Well, there, there, there is actually, I don't have a, I, I've just read it because I've been reading some of those parts of the, of the general laws, but there is a process that's supposed to be followed for staggering. It's laid out in the statute.
Okay, good, good, because we're not doing it.
All right. So to, to shorten this, I, I will be happy to ask Donna about those two things. And, um, but Deacon, um, the town administrator has asked that whenever we go to the town council, she be kept informed, um, so it doesn't come as a surprise to her. So I told her that when I do it, it's always an assignment from the planning board. And that when I get such as an assignment, you as chair will relay that to her that.
Okay, well, that's.
That I'm going to do that. So, so you, you, you have to now give her a call and tell her that.
That's fine.
That I'm going to do that.
That's fine. Um, we haven't done that in the past, but.
Okay. So, so, so you can do that as chair, right?
I, I certainly can.
I, I, I can also very briefly outline, outline our approach to the associate member. Because her organization, MMLA, will, is going to be asked to, uh, to come on board with that. But so I, I can just take a minute or two to outline that. I'm, I'm sure she'll appreciate the approach.
Well, I thought she had already agreed with it.
She did.
Not the lai, not the language part, just the, the asking the legislature.
Yeah, yeah, well. Mostly what she agreed was, uh, that, that it was pointless to fight the Attorney General. And she didn't want to do it.
Well, yes, okay. So do we want to talk about energy storage anymore?
No, I think Jeff's suggestion of picking it up on the 16th is a good one.
I, I, I had some nitpicks in your text, which I haven't brought up, but.
Or just email them to me and I'll, I'll make it better and send it, I'll resend it out.
Yeah, okay. Okay, shall, shall we, shall we go on to the punctuation of 8.10-7C?
But.
Yeah, so I guess that's me. I'll share my screen. Um, let's see. So it's, it's really small. Um, I discovered this a couple of months ago. I think it was because Gail Fleischinger was updating the solar bylaw for the website and had a question and, um, oh, no, 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 actually it was, um, uh, Beth on the Concom, um, Fred Steinberg's wife, who's Wilson, Beth Wilson, asked me a question about it. Um, and she called my attention to the fact that currently there, we're missing punctuation in between, it's right in here is where we don't have punctuation between this part and this part. It should be three things. It should be land subject to MGL, chapter 184, semicolon, priority habitat, et cetera, et cetera. And then the third thing is important wildlife habitat map by DEP. I'm actually disinclined. Yeah.
Are, are, are you sure you need semicolons or, or, um?
I, I would defer to Deacon.
Me too, me too.
I, I would have used commas, but, but I'm, I'm wary of the Harvard comma.
Uh, the Harvard comma, that's, um, that's standard drafting practice in Massachusetts, my friend.
But see, I mean, I, 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 for a while, I have thought the way that it currently reads, it, it, it just seems all run together to me. This, this has bothered me too. I mean, I, I, is that, it's not, are you saying, Jeff, that, that, that the punctuation as it is, is, is good?
No, I, I went back. I mean, I, I drafted this thing and I went back and my draft had appropriate punctuation.
Yeah, it got lost. It got lost somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, because I mean, it just seems like a run-on to me.
Right, well, it, 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 it became so.
Yeah, so, but I have, I, I guess I have a thought. Um, I, I'm sort of loathe to sort of amend the solar bylaw at this point in time because that means one, we have to have a town meeting vote and then two, it has to go to the AG to get reviewed yet again. And I was thinking, you know, in terms of, this is our solar bylaw that, you know, we're, we would be working from and interpreting. It seems like if we're, we're only missing one comma, it's this, it's the second one after the NHESP, um, parentheticals, the, the first one's there. That if and when we get a special permit for a, a solar project, at least for the next, you know, year or two, you know, wait till things are boring again, um, to be able to say, you'd understand there's three different habitat impacts that, you know, are involved. There's the MGL one, there's the priority habitat one, there's the important wildlife habitat. Um, and I guess someone can come back and say that the second and third are really just a second one, you know, they're merged because it's no comma. But like, I don't, on the one hand, it opens us up because it's not our intent. They really are three distinct things, but going, like getting it, sending it up to the AG's office to get reviewed and having to have a whole conversation at town meeting. It could, you know, a town meeting could be very technical and easy and short conversation, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. And, you know, once it's on the floor.
Will not be, Michael, you know that, even with this, so I agree with where you're going.
I, okay, I, I guess, I, I guess I, I thought it, it did matter and it seems to me that, that, that that this, this section could, could easily be involved in a, in a lawsuit. I mean, and that it, it would just be better in the face of a lawsuit to have the commas there.
Do you think, Deacon, I, I guess my concern at the town meeting level was that, you know, once it's on the floor for a vote, that people can start wanting to amend it. Like more than just commas, but in terms of substance, that was the part that I was like, this, this seems, this reflects what we like, punctuation aside.
Well, um, the Michael concern is, is well-founded because this is some of the stuff that, uh, people in town who are, um, enthusiastic backers of the, uh, of, of the, uh, the, the solar partnership, so to speak, have complained about. Because these areas represent large swaths in Chutesberry, you know, the, uh, the priority habitat and biomap two and all that stuff. I mean, these are large areas and while we've tried to assure folks that, that we know they're large polygons and that, you know, we, we would look at case by case and there's waivers and everything else. This is something that's, um, that's worrisome to, um, to the solar proponents and, uh, you know, i- i- if we bring it up, they, they may have a go at it at, at, at town meetings. So that's correct.
I really think we should fold it into some other more substantive changes as Michael, I think Michael is suggesting.
Yeah, I just think waiting a little bit would be good, you know? The climate will be different in two or three years, perhaps the, you know, the, if we don't, if we don't have active things sort of over the horizon, it would be better to change it after the fact.
Yeah. And, you know, if, if you look at those first two clauses, land subject to MGL chapter 184, section 31 to 33. I mean, those are the conservation restrictions. They have nothing at all to do with the priority habitat biomap that's mapped by natural heritage. You, you know, so there, there, you know, it's like an apple and an orange, um, right there.
Yeah.
So you, you couldn't, you, you could not conflate them in, into one thing because they're entirely different.
Yeah, but that's actually not the issue because that's there, that's, there is a comma there. It's, I mean, and in the original, it, it exists. If you look up where it says current, after 184, there is a comma.
Well, no, no.
Oh, no, you're right. You're right. There's a missing comma there too.
Yeah, the, the, the comma after the 33.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Okay, you're correct.
Yeah, that, that whole concept ends at 33, whether there's a comma or not, because if, if that's the end of the, the conservation restriction discussion, priority habitat is a whole nother animal.
Right. So the only question then, Jeff, to your point, I, I think that makes sense, is the, in the last line where it says, and the, where one could make an argument is that it has to be priority habitat biomap to critical, you know, natural, uh, et cetera, and important wildlife habitat. This is, you know, which seems like, well, I don't know if that matters or not.
Well, that's the Harvard comma issue. And, um, I mean, a lot of times that's left off.
Exactly, no, no, exactly. In, in, in fact, over the last, I'm going to say 10 to 15 years, it's been left off and acceptable not to have that comma before the end in, in a three, you know, a three-part clause. It's, what I'm saying is it's common practice not to have the comma in front of the end.
So if, if we can get away with not opening this part up, this potentially controversial and um, irresistible to amending to some part, we should probably leave it alone.
I'm fine with that, but I mean, the grammarian in me is not happy.
Sit on your hands, Deacon. Sit on your hands.
I know, Deacon, I'm reeling too. I feel your pain.
Deacon, I don't. I'm sorry.
So can we leave it as duly noted and maybe we revisit at some point when it makes sense?
Some future year, yeah. I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I don't want to, I don't want to open Pandora's box. It's good. It's good. So, um, so let's, let's talk about, um, oh, here's, here's another one. Linda Scott called me today and, um, about the, the email issue and, um, and Carrie and and we wound up thinking that maybe, maybe, um, maybe Linda, Carrie, Michael and I should have a Zoom meeting about, about how that all worked. And I, I bring, I'm, I'm just trying to get a more opinion about.
What did she say was the issue?
Yeah, what are we talking about?
So what had happened was, I, I'm not sure who posted this planning board meeting, but I had seen it be, uh, posted. And so when I saw it posted and I knew that CBA was going to be a part of it, I assumed that because it was the one posting, I thought it was all posted and all done with, because I have yet to post a meeting myself. I have yet to post it. I know how to, I have all the instructions, but I have yet to do it myself. So once I saw it posted, I was like, all right, well, then I shouldn't have to worry about it. But what I didn't know is that because it's a whole different board, even though it is still one meeting, but two boards, the second board still had to post. So I was unaware of that. And so when that occurred, I did not post it or it was, it was sent, the posting was sent to me, Grace, and I believe two others, I want to say Becky and Linda.
Yeah, yeah.
So once, once that occurred, I was actually in the middle of my own small meeting with Linda. And, um, that is when Grace sent the email saying the issue had occurred. So I'd explained it to her and then she had corrected me as well.
So it's not an email issue because you are, you're successful using the, the, what I do is clerk email. At this point, it sounds like, right?
Yeah, I have access to both the, or all three emails, the ZBA one, the planning board one and the Concom one.
Right.
So when I had seen, um, I got some form of notification from the My Town Government website saying that the planning board meeting had been posted. So since I was under the impression that both meetings were in the one Zoom meeting, that since it was the one Zoom meeting was posted, that it would work out for both, but because now that I know that it's two boards, the both need to be still posted.
Yeah. So Deacon, hearing this, I don't think it's an email thing. I think it's just a matter of Carrie, you know, sort of getting your head around that, you know, each board is its own island, so to speak.
Well, I, I don't think, I, I just think that Linda was talking in, in more general terms, not just about this.
Oh, yeah. So I think I know what you're talking about. So going through the emails have been interesting, to say the least. A lot of stuff has been compiled in there because no one's been monitoring it for quite a bit. And also there's a lot of stuff that gets sent into that planning board email, stuff that I don't unnecessarily, necessarily have to deal with from my understanding and from Linda's understanding. So I think it was a matter of us going through and consolidating what actually should be sent to that email.
Yeah. So, so sure, we can have a conversation.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, yeah. So I'll, um, Linda said she, she'd be happy to set up the Zoom link so for, for, for a time that we would, she's just, she suggested that, that we offer some times to her and and she can pick one.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds fine to me. I do, I don't know if anyone's or if she stated, but I do work other second job as well, but I already have the hours posted. So I know when I am available this week and when I am not.
Okay, so.
Let's just do this via, via email. You can do times for your email to talk about email.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, I will do that too. I will, okay, great.
Hey, Deacon, just FYI, we never did public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Is there somebody who wants to make a comment about issue not on agenda? Okay, good. Good. Well, let's, let's go to, let's go to the minutes. I know, I know we have Steve's one 10 minutes. And I'm not sure if, if Nathan has any, any new ones.
I don't, I, I do a once at a minutes. I know which one it is and then I gotta go back and, and get some minutes posted.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Perfect, perfect. So let's, let's go over the, let's go over the one 10 minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of January 10th, 2022.
Am I here a second?
I'll second it.
Let's talk.
So I had, I had a few that I, I sent to Steve, but just to say them out loud. So in terms of the attendees, it has associate members as Ashley and then Bob, but Bob's not an associate member. It's Jake. So.
Yeah, I made, I made that change, Michael.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying because this, I'm supposed to.
Bob was in attendance, but I had him miss, missed as the associate member.
Yeah. And then for all the, the votes while we're doing this remote stuff, even though one would assume that unanimous means everybody who is in attendance, we have to do the, the roll call. So last name I kind of stuff.
Can I just, can I just reference? So I don't have to do that. The list of, of board members, it seems silly to have to repeat all board members if it's unanimous.
How long have you been in town government for? Silly?
I, I, I mean, I can put a clarify, I mean, I can do it certainly.
You volunteered for a bureaucratic task, Steve.
Unanimous means all, all board members that, and all board members are listed above who are present.
Right. It helps that I, when I was doing my minutes for my, I should clarify my first set of minutes. So I don't know how credible I am, but um, when I did this and I went them over, they haven't been approved yet, but with Chuck, what I, what I did was I wrote, um, well, also they have a very small board, so it was a lot easier. But originally I had written, uh, all present members approve. So that way someone did have any questions, you can go back up to the beginning. It says like listed what members were present.
It's, so I'll just say, I'm on the CPC with Linda. And, you know, Linda is the select board administrative secretary and is the, knows the rules. And as of two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, she and I had the same comment about this and we both agreed that she was in, in pretty emphatic that you have to do the last name I roll call stuff. So if it's unanimous, it's just a cut and paste, but that's, you know, I don't think someone's going to sue us if we don't do it, but that's what I'm doing.
I'm happy to do it. It just seemed kind of, I don't know, silly, you know, that's all it just.
I want it to be the accurate order that the names were called in.
I have no idea what that was.
And then I, I just got to say, I love the Chuck and Jeff continue to disagree section. I think there should be a couple more of those.
And, and let me just say, I have a correction to make on those. Okay. So on the first set of those, the last sentence of the, where it says Chuck reiterates, we're having three times. The last one I'm suggesting that we amend it, Chuck and Jeff still continue to disagree. And then on page, I didn't, I didn't number the pages. I'm sorry. I'll have to number those two. I think on the second page where I have the last time I have it, where Chuck reiterates his interpretation zoning by law. It's where it's all by itself. It says Chuck and Jeff still. And then I want to put the clause in after much more discussion, continue to disagree about raising height structures.
That'll be even better.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. I had one comment. On the second page, there's a, it's like a summary of Michael's proposal.
We're, we're on the second page. Are you, Nathan?
Um, there's numbered items, you know, knock down rebuild.
Yes, 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 yes.
Substantial to significant. And then, you know, just down below, you say, immediate below the numbers, Chuck notes number two cannot be changed to significance since significant is in the state statute.
Oh, I see.
So you need, you know, don't want to change it to significant because substantial is, you know.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And I, and I think it says statue and not statute.
It does say statue.
It does. It does.
That's a, that's the kind of thing that Deacon catches me on all the time.
And, and Michael, that's one of the ones I embedded.
I'd like to note that, that Chuck and Jeff agreed on this. Yeah, they did agree to it. It was the only thing they agreed to in that meeting.
Uh, I would note that at the, at the bottom of page two, Donna's name is Miss, Donna's last.
Yes.
Uh, bottom of page two.
It's M A C N I C O L.
I'm just, I, I'm, oh, there it is. I see it. Thank you. Got it. And the other thing.
Oh, Bob Ritchie's name is wrong.
Yeah, well, I would actually ask Jeff to ask Bob Ritchie to, he's spelling his name incorrectly. And I would ask Jeff to talk to Bob about that, but in the meantime, I'll change that.
Okay.
Okay. I just made those changes as we talked about. Okay. Are we through talking? Anybody want to say anything else? So do, just a quick question, Deacon, do I re, do I resend these to the planning board? The re, the amended ones?
No, no, no. I mean, they, they need to, they need to get to Grace.
So I just send them to Grace?
Well. Once we approve them. Yeah, one, yeah, after, yes, yes.
Okay. Do I send them to you or, or what, what does, how does that work?
Town clerk at schutzbury.org.
Okay. Okay, so I'll call the roll if we're ready. Okay, Michael.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Nathan.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
And I'm an I. Good.
The, Deacon, can I just ask you, in terms of, for clarification, there's that long list of minutes. And so like I, I sent everybody what, what I figured out, but what's the, um, what's the issue?
Excuse me.
Are some, some not?
Okay, what that list is, that's a, that's a list that appears on the planning board page. That's a list of minutes that are not showing. I mean, if you.
It's ones I have to send in to clerk, Michael.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And you're, the eight 25 that you mentioned, Michael, that, we had a site visit and a meeting that day.
We did?
Yeah, that, that was when we talked to, um, Yeah.
Okay.
What's his name?
Something, it was a, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So basically.
Apologize for the wrong zoning.
Ah, that one, right.
Whitman, Whitman.
Right.
So, so at this point in terms of minutes, it's only, Nathan has some that he has to get us to approve and it's just an issue of getting them to the town clerk and having Grace post them. That's, they're not showing up, right?
Yeah, I think I, the one I have to actually do, I think is from November and then all the other ones I have to just send it, you know, so make sure I have the updates from the meeting or whatever and send it to Grace.
Yeah. Okay. Cool.
Good. Great. I think, let's talk about the, let's talk about the amicus brief.
Okay. So I'll introduce it and then I guess we can discuss. So, um, the one that I shared with you, um, last month I reported that there's a couple of groups that initially had been thinking about doing it that, that ended up deciding not to. So it's the Mass Municipal Lawyers decided not to, Mass Municipal Association decided not to. There was the Law School at Clark that decided not to. And so Meg Sheehan, who's an environmental lawyer in Southeast, and I sent you her bio, she used to be at the AG's office and she's been practicing for 30 years. Ended up doing it in consultation with folks at the Clark Law School, but she's doing the submission. And what I know is that, like I told you, Wendell Select Board has agreed that they would just sign on. They basically said last month, whatever you're right, we're going to sign on to. There's different towns that are getting asked, both in the southeast part of the state where there's a lot of solar development. I know Buckland, Ashfield, maybe Conway, a bunch of towns out here are getting asked to do it. So, and.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but like, what do you mean by to do? Sorry, just because I've been to the last few meetings because I wasn't here, but.
Sure. So this is an amicus brief, which means that you're a friend of the court and people, entities can sign on as to the amicus brief. So right now it's, it's being written and submitted by Meg Sheehan. It sounds like Save the Pine Barrens is signing on and the Wendell Select Board, although I haven't seen it in writing, I've been told that they've been, they're going to sign on. And so the issue is that other town bodies across the state can also sign on to the amicus brief as being a friend of the court. So basically supporting the, the argument. And the Supreme Judicial Court, the SJC is hearing oral arguments on March 7th, I believe it is. So this is due 20 days prior to that. So at the end of February, it's due. So this is an almost final draft. As you'll see, there's just, you know, some stuff that needs to happen. And I'm gonna, what Jeff, wrong one, hold on. I just was going to share this for a second. Why am I getting that one? That's the wrong one. Ah, I got it. Hold on.
I, I, I have one. You want me to share it?
No, I, I got it. I was just, uh, there we go. So the, um, just want to make it bigger. So I think for, for me, it's the, it's this page, which is, the issues addressed by, I don't know how you say this, the amici.
It depends if it's classical Latin or not.
Yeah.
Oh my God.
You know, and so this is, the, the question basically is, is the whole idea of prohibiting unreasonable regulate solar energy systems. Does that mean basically that in the, in the law where it says that whether allowing solar energy physics, solar energy facilities in certain areas of municipality, but prohibiting them in other areas is permissible? Or whether it constitutes unreasonable regulation in contravention to the statute? So for example, in our case, we have the nine zones. One could say that the nine zones are a municipality, basically saying it could be in certain areas or not. So that, you know, and then with the whole conversation we had about the biomap two and the conservation areas that our bylaw is basically saying it can be in some places, not others. And the way this brief presents it is, is that unreasonable regulation or not? I thi- I think we would say because we like our bylaw that it's not unreasonable regulation, but that's sort of at the core of the argument as far as I understand it. But Jeff, do you have a, a different take or is, what's your sense?
Well, I, I read about half of it and let's see, I think the first half deals with whether this exemption pertains to large scale ground mounted. And there, you know, she, she, she attempts to make the case that that, that they didn't have large scale ground mounted in mind when they wrote this exemption. She hasn't come right out and said because it didn't exist. So maybe it did exist. I didn't think it did in 1985.
Not, not commercially.
Yeah. But so that's the first, the first part of the argument is that, well, it doesn't apply to these things. And then I guess the second part of the argument, which I haven't read yet, which will be, well, even if you, even if you admit that it does apply, towns can still reasonably regulate and parse out where they can go appropriately within a town, as long as that's not like a de minimis area. And, you know, Schutzbury would, would come out okay in that argument. So I, I, I haven't finished it, but it, it, it sounds good. I, I like it. A lot of citations there.
So here's my question, Jeff, and maybe you can't answer this. But let's assume, let's imagine that an amicus brief was done by people hired by the solar industry.
Yeah, Michael Pill's going to do one.
Yeah, there are going to be some.
Okay. So I would assume that that amicus brief would be cut, caught, countered to the, to this one. Is that a safe assumption? And, and then if it is, where does that leave us?
Well, I, I think, I think it, it, it is, it's sort of probably more than an assumption and a fact. I mean, Michael will be doing one. He told us that a couple of months ago, but the, you know, the solar industry is definitely going to be submitting it. I think that's why this is important because if there's no amicus briefs, then the argument doesn't get framed. So it's not a municipal perspective saying it is reasonable. It's, you've only got other people saying it's unreasonable. So that's sort of the importance of why you do it, you know, and then the court will, you know.
Okay. So you answered my question. Basically, we've got two sides coming up with an amicus brief that says opposite things and then it falls to the court as the ultimate decision. the ultimate decision maker. And then the only concern there that I have at least, if from what Michael Pillis told us is true, is the way the land use courts are leaning in, in the context of climate change.
Yeah, I think it's SJC is what he was referring to, but yeah, I mean, my sense, listening to Michael.
Court.
Say what?
Deacon?
I thought he was talking about land court.
Did I not say, I'm sorry, I meant land court if I didn't say it.
No, you did. I, I corrected you, but you didn't think I was correcting you. Um, but it seems like both from what Michael had said, and then what I've heard from other folks is that the presumption is that the SJC is probably heading in the direction of a very narrow, um, interpretation of what can be regulated, you know, so, I mean, I think I've mentioned, you know, that I've been working with, um, Senator Comerford and then our future, well, I don't know if he's our future rep anymore, but Jacob Olivera out of Ludlow, they filed legislation to change the law. Um, it got a hearing at the telecommunications, energy and utilities, um, committee a couple of weeks ago. And in talking to Joe, you know, I asked the question, so if the SJC comes down and says that you, towns can only regulate in a very narrow circumstance, that's going to create this Wild West where all, you know, all these towns that have solar stuff that's beyond public health and welfare, um, it's going to throw everything up in the air. So, you know, it'll be interesting to see what happens if they do that, but it, you know, part of my.
You mean it'll undermine any solar zoning by law that any town has? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah. I think I mentioned, like I looked, there's 206 municipalities that I could find that have solar bylaws. Um, ours are definitely much more comprehensive than others. And there's a whole bunch that are, um, pretty much sort of templates. But even ones that are less comprehensive than ours go beyond what I would say is the strict, um, public health and welfare, um, which is the only reason in like in this, it says, um, so if it goes beyond it, then yeah, it doesn't, it's based, I don't, I'm assuming it throws out the solar bylaw. I don't know how that actually works, but it could easily be a Wild West kind of situation where, um, regulation is very constrained. So part of the reason I think having the amicus brief is someone's got to say, this is, this is what municipalities think is reasonable and at least trying to influence the decision. So it's, it doesn't get constrained so greatly that, um, towns and cities can't do anything effectively. You know, like I was thinking about just setbacks, you know, like I, when I was looking at all the other towns, like, you know, people, different towns have different setbacks, but you know, one could logically make an argument that a setback is about public health and safety and welfare, but you could also, but that's an argument, you know, someone can say, no, a setback is just an arbitrary thing that you came up with. It doesn't really affect. So, you know, even something as mundane as that is sort of questionable. So.
It, it, it's not going to hurt or cause in any way to sign on to this.
Yeah, and it doesn't put us in any bad position.
No, they, I mean, I have to say that I was encouraged when I saw this, when I read, I skimmed through it. I was encouraged, but then I haven't seen the opposing side's, uh, amicus.
I, what I understand is they wait to the last minute and do it. So no one gets to see it.
Uh, I see. Interesting.
So I know in talking to Meg, you know, it's this thing where she needs to distribute it to the town. So the boards can do what we're doing. But inevitably we're showing, you know, the, the towns are showing their hands before the industry is because the industry doesn't have to get buy-in.
Yep. That makes sense.
Because it all becomes public information once it's filed, I think.
Right. But you're right. This gives, this gives the, uh, solar industry a basis to make a counter argument. So.
Yeah.
Is a, is a final draft going to be passed out?
It, it, it will be, I, but I think you know, the substance, the changes that'll happen, I, you know, from what, what she said is this is basically what it is. There's some citations that need to get fixed and I think there's some small stuff. I think we can, we can either do one or two things now that we're meeting on the 16th, which is probably just tight enough. Um, I mean, I, I'm comfortable voting for today. Uh, and then if we get a final, I, I, I can distribute it out. That's easy. That's one way to do it, or we can wait to the final. And I think probably do it, I think the 16th is probably fine. I mean, the, the nice thing about us approving it today is then they get to be able to go to other towns and say, you know, in addition to Wendell and Schutzbury, um, and sort of building the momentum. So I'm sorry, I would be, I'd prefer to do it today if we could, if people feel comfortable. Um, but I think time wise, we could get by with the 16th.
I, I, I'm happy to make a motion that the town, the planning board supports this amicus brief or, or however you have to phrase it.
I'll second. Jeff seconds.
Discussion. But the, the motion is to approve tonight.
Yeah.
Yes.
Approve, approve as it's eventually slightly modified and finalized.
Right, right. This is, this is a draft, I guess what I.
There's still a few notes in there and stuff, but it's not going to change that much.
Right. So how about if I make a motion that the planning board support this draft, knowing that there may be some minor modifications to it?
Sure. So we're, but we would be, we're agreeing to be signatorious basically.
Yeah.
Second that one too.
Well, well, do, okay, so do we now have two motions on the floor?
No, he modified his motion.
I modified my motion.
Modified my second.
Okay, okay. Okay, um, are we ready to call the rolls? Anybody want to talk more? Okay, uh, call it rolled. Steve?
Hi.
Uh, Nathan? Oh, he probably.
I'm, I'm abstaining, yes.
Yeah. Linda?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I'm an I. Good.
Cool.
Good. Phew.
We did it.
I think we've done what I had on the agenda.
Cool.
Yay.
Very efficient.
Yeah, so let's take a half an hour to talk about unanticipated business.
So I'll, I'll, I'll have my dynamic conversations completed by the 16th so we can put that on the agenda then.
Okay. Okay. Um, Jeff, I, I want to, that the name you've put down for yourself is, is politically incorrect now. Yeah, but, but it's accurate. They, they had to, they had to back down at AC, you know? They had to give that up.
Oh, yeah?
They're no longer the Lord Jeff's.
The mammoths. The mammoths.
Right. It's, it's the, it's the in on Boltwood.
In on Boltwood, geez, okay.
Yeah, just change your name to that.
Okay.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second that. Okay, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
I think it's unanimous.
Okay. See you in a week, two weeks, whatever it is.
We can.
Next week, yeah.
Nine days, nine days.
Okay.
See you then.
Okay, bye, everybody.
Good night.
Right.